Thank you, Rob. I'll call this meeting of our committee the whole to order. Is there any declaration of interest on this agenda? Okay, thank you. Any, there's no delegations. Determination of items requiring separate discussion consent agenda. Anybody wish any of these items to remove for further discussion? Counselor Gray.
The item regarding the quarterly purchasing report, just for a couple of questions, thanks.
Okay, that'll be six B and we'll get to that probably not too distant future. Anyone else? I'd look for a motion to adopt the rest. Counselor Body, Counselor McQueen, all those in favor? That is carried. Items for direction and discussion. The first item is the report from our C O Kim Lindgrove. She's going to be reporting on court security and prisoner transportation. So, Kim, the floor is yours. Yeah, sure. We'll get a mover in a second or why not? Counselor Hutchison, Counselor Body. There you go.
Good morning, County Council. The report before you examines the issue of fair and equitable responsibility for the costs of court security and prisoner transportation for the Superior Court of Justice and the Ontario Court of Justice located at six eleven ninth east in Owen Sound. I'll start with a little bit of of background. The Police Services Act of nineteen ninety replaced by the Community Safety and Policing Act in twenty nineteen. Mandates that local police services in Ontario provide security and prisoner transportation services to the Ontario Court of Justice and the Superior Court of Justice. This responsibility encompasses perimeter security, screening courtroom security and prisoner transport. The act requires police chiefs to develop security plans, establish procedures and ensure personnel are adequately trained. A long time ago, and I'll just say originally, court security and prisoner transportation costs were intended to be revenue neutral through fines and provincial funding. However, the current model for funding court security and prisoner transportation services in Ontario places financial responsibility on municipalities. Ontario is the only province that does things this way. The court security and prisoner transportation program that has been in place since twenty twelve allocates funding based on past expenditures, but lacks responsiveness to current costs. So they're paying based on costs that were incurred, I think up to two years ago. The amount of provincial funding available at a hundred and twenty five million dollars has been fixed since twenty eighteen. This issue has been delegated on at AMO by the city and the county as well as other upper and lower tier municipalities numerous times. In twenty twenty two, the province retained consulting resources, and that's the Gosse Gilroy report that's attached to the report before you to review ongoing concerns about funding equity, service efficiencies and safety improvements. There are recommendations in that report for both the Solicitor General and for the police services who are serving the court. The City of Owen Sound staff report that was also attached to the report before you notes that Owen Sound police have taken action on several of those recommendations and are committed to continuing to make improvements to improve security and control costs. That report also referenced references recommendation sixteen of the Gosse Gilroy report that states if there isn't substantial progress within four years, and that would bring us to twenty twenty six. Consideration should be given to creating a new agency or having the O P P carry out the court security and prisoner transportation role. And I think no matter what we decide today, we should all pay attention to that date and be prepared to advocate for that recommendation. So the bottom line today is that despite efforts to optimize operations and advocate for provincial support, Owen Sound's funding shortfall in delivering mandated services that the whole county requires will be about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in twenty twenty four. There are various models being used to share in or cover off the differences between the provincial grant and the true cost of providing the court security services across Ontario, and those are either by including them in O P P contracts or the use of area rating or other special levies. In our case, the court service boundaries don't align with municipal boundaries. So the Owen Sound Court serves North and South Bruce Peninsula. The court in Walkerton serves Hanover and West Gray. So if we start to think about, well, you know, should we be, you know, putting in some system of of chargebacks? I think that if if we start to charge the Bruce County municipalities, they're only going to then implement their own charges to our own municipalities. And at the end of the day, both of us would incur new costs for administration and it would be the taxpayers who would really not be any further ahead. So the recommendation before you is for the county to enter into an agreement with the City of Owen Sound where the county would pay the difference in cost between the eligible court security costs under the provincial program and the grant amount that Owen Sound receives. And as I said, that's about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year. This proposal is meant to ensure fair and sustainable service delivery aligned with transparency and accountability principles. And I'm happy to take any questions. There was quite a lot of information in those reports if you if you had a chance to take a look at it.
Thank you, Kim. The list of things that were supposed to be in our revenue neutral continues to grow. Uh, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thanks, Kim, for the complex system. Can you just, in the report, it talks about court security and court transportation, and they're really two separate things. Certainly, I believe that Owen Sound is bearing the brunt of the court security, and we all have a responsibility there. But the O P P are providing a lot of transportation to and from Penetang machine where the nearest jail is. So how does, in the report, it talks about transportation, but this is more court security, is it not?
Thanks for the question, Counselor Mackey. What I know is the costs that Owen Sound is incurring. And to your point, if O P P is taking on a portion of those court security costs, then that likely means that it's something that Owen Sound themselves are not having to do and and that cost then is not contributing to an even higher cost that the city would would need to bear. So the the costs that they that Owen Sound is bearing are the are the ones that that they have. It's important to know, too, I think, even if you look at the the Owen Sound staff report, the province has established a regime of eligible costs that they're willing to cover. I understand that there are costs in providing the service that the province doesn't even consider eligible. So the City of Owen Sound has costs over and above even what these eligible costs are that we're not at this time recommending that we entertain and the city gets no compensation for. So I can't really speak to what it is that either the city or the O P P are doing as far as prisoner transportation, except to say that in the in the budget documents that Owen Sound provided, they did have some prisoner transportation costs and those were noted. And if they're able to, as I think that maybe it speaks to part of that comment about Owen Sound and Chief Ambrose working to do what they can to reduce the cost or contain the cost of providing services.
Counselor Body perhaps has some insight into this. Counselor Body.
I don't I don't have perfect knowledge, but I can fill in some of the blanks. I think it's my understanding that there is a transport vehicle that will leave the super jail in Penetang and run through Collingwood, Owen Sound, Walkerton and return the other way. So they're doing most of the transportation. There are times, however, that they get caught up in court in Walkerton and our court has done it too. Perhaps it is an example, but the 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 transport vehicle isn't coming till four, so there's extra security there for a couple of hours long after court has left. It's also, uh, my understanding, I might be getting might be getting a hit here. It's, uh, my understanding that there may be times that we run late here and we would then be responsible for getting the person to Penetang because the the bus has already gone through. So, yeah, we would do after hours at a O P P at times that O P P service can't do. But but basically, there is that service. So that service won't be included in this court security cost. This is just the cost that that we're facing here.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Counselor Niels.
Thank you, Ward Mill. Just one question when looking at kind of the breakdown of these tax levy subsidy that seems to be pretty, I guess, volatile, the best word, because it's fluctuating quite significantly. When it comes to trying to budget, is there a premise to try to budget based on the fault, the previous year's costings to have, make sure there's enough coverage? Or just can you give me an idea on how the county is planning on trying to budget when we're seeing some significant changes in the cost of one sample?
And then just a comment about that volatility. I think what we've seen in our own provincial offenses court since COVID, and we think that carries on into this court, is some changes in the way that the court operates with regard to appearances over video and things like that. So I think that we've been through a period of some fairly significant change in the in the way that the the court operates and the ability to forecast those costs. It's a little bit out of your hands in some way because you don't know what matters you'll have. Like even in our own court, you can have years where, you know, it's a pretty standard operating year. You have the same kind of volume and significance of events or matters that you're hearing at the court. And then other years you have some that are perhaps a lot more significant, take up a lot more time and security and all those other things. So it is a very challenging thing. I would expect to try and and budget for that. What is proposed here is that the county would be covering off the difference between the costs that Owen Sound has incurred incurred and the provincial grant, and we will create an agreement with the city about that. My thinking at this point in time though is that we can't know what those numbers are until the end of the year, when the costs have been incurred and established so that we would be covering off the difference from the year prior rather than looking ahead to the future because we just wouldn't know.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. So I guess as far as, you know, I I certainly agree, we need to pay that help Owen Sound out with this because we're all responsible. Would we do it by household? By the number of households in each municipality? That's how our O P P billing is done by household as opposed to just a an overall levy increase in proportion to I'm just not sure how we we come up with how we equally come up with the the dollar value of each municipality would pay.
I would think Chasworth would pay half, but Kim?
I will be honest and assumed that we would, it would be part of the levy and part of the budget, and it would be apportioned as the rest of the levy is. But I'm going to put Mary Lou on the spot and ask her about the considerations and work that might be involved in in doing it a different way. And maybe that's something that we want to think about and bring back as part of that, you know, the future agreement that you'll need to approve. So I'll turn it over to Mary Lou if she's got a couple of quick thoughts.
Thanks, Kim. My initial thought when Kim and I discussed this is we would allocate it the same as we do any other expense that's in their budget. We don't allocate paramedic services based on a number of households or any of the other departments we have. So to me, it makes most sense that it's just allocated as we do with every other expense in the county.
Thanks, Mary Lou. Any other questions? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That carries. Thank you very much. The next one is a report by brought to us by Rebecca Denard, our manager of climate change. She's here to talk about or give us an update on the climate change initiatives. So Rebecca, welcome. Mover in second. Counselor Echols, Counselor Pringle. Thank you very much. Rebecca.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and thanks to everybody for having me again here today. You should have all received a copy of our climate change initiative snapshot document. So this is really an overview of all of the projects we've been working on over the vast twelve months. We wanted to get it all into one place, so it's available for your fellow counselors and for your staff to share with stakeholders and other members of the public to really see the impact that we're having collectively all together. So I'll just be giving you a quick overview of the projects in this report today. Most of them you will have heard about before, but happy to dive into any more details if you're if you're interested at the end. So we start with going green and gray and our priority actions. You'll see it's, I apologize, this is fairly small to look at on the screen, but you have it in paper copy. So these are the that we identified as priorities for going green and gray and reflected in the actions in the document. Of course, important to lead by example. So we have, these are our corporate actions that we are doing at at the county. Mostly the one of the some of the things I want to highlight are the net zero ready builds that we're doing for Rockwood Terrace as well as a a new paramedic base and and a housing development in Dundalk. So we're starting to get that to be a well-oiled machine in terms of trying getting getting some of those energy conservation principles into new housing builds. We're also working on, I'm applying right now for funding to get chargers in the some of the transport depots so we can start to electrify our fleet. And we're doing some work with energy audits and strategic energy management to address energy usage in our in our current county buildings. Some of those things coming out of the E C D M plan, which you heard about last time I was I was here. Moving on to some of the community actions, agriculture and nature-based solutions is is one of our first bullets here. You may have noticed on your way in that our plantings on the county grounds are going well. There's some new fruit trees, apple trees and other fruit trees newly planted this year. And the rain garden is looking great there at the bottom of the of the hill. We're also doing the Experimental Lakers program, engaging farmers to try new new farming techniques for sustainability and hope to continue that project into the future. A waste and organics diversion, we are meeting with with staff from across the municipalities in a community of practice to look for opportunities to collaborate on on some waste strategies countywide. Likewise, with the transportation, we have applied for funding from the Charge On program through our Rural Recharge Program to get public a public charging network throughout the county. We are unfortunately still waiting on a decision on that funding, but assuming that that all goes well, we will be implementing some more public charging infrastructure around the county. Buildings and developments is another big one. You've heard a lot about our green development standards, so we continue to work on that project. We finished our first round of public consultation and are now drafting the standards and will bring back a draft for more consultation probably in the fall. One that you may have heard less about is the Community Efficiency Financing Program, which is working on a program that will help finance retrofits for for homeowners in existing homes. So we have a feasibility and design project for that now, and then next steps would be to 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 move forward with a capital project, but what we can, that will be another, that's the phase two, and we will get into that later. We also have an adaptation plan in the works. We're working with the ORCA, which is the Ontario Reserve Centre for Climate Adaptation. We're putting together a working group that will establish this an adaptation plan. And we're also applying for some funding for F C M to support that work of making our adaptation plan. Outrage and engagement is a is a big part of what we do. We are working again with with schools. We have the Learning for Sustainable Futures group on board for this next iteration of the Youth Climate Action Conference. Earlier in the years, we also worked with Wacudong on a sharing circle related to climate initiatives. So that continues to be an ongoing thing which we reach people through our website and our newsletters and social media. I'm going to skip over all of these lovely municipal updates. All of the the staff in the member municipalities are also doing great work, which I will let you read about on on your own. It's always a privilege to cooperate and collaborate with with our our member municipalities, and I think together we're doing some really great great initiatives. And so I'm, yeah. Everybody's doing something. So it's really great to see the variety of things that we're up to. Lots and lots of partners, as you see listed there. We were trying to put the logos in. We just couldn't fit them all, so we've got just the text. And once again, thank you to my my wonderful team without this group of three, small but mighty team of people. This is, these are the people who who get all these things done. Particularly Megan Miles, who really was the leaded led the creation of this report and as well as several of the initiatives contained within it. So that was a fast and quick overview of everything we've been doing and having to happy to dive into more details if if you would like to do that right now.
Thank you, Rebecca. You're right. A lot of work and a lot of neat things going on in in terms of the climate. Randy, you want to add something?
I just want to thank Rebecca and Megan and Kieran, as well as all the work that's being done locally as 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 highlighted in this document. Some of that's coming out as as a result of the Municipal Climate Change Community Practice where we meet with representatives, staff representatives from each of your local municipalities on a regular basis to try to advance some of these initiatives and actions. And I think it's through working together. Again, we're able to accomplish some of these 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 actions and initiatives. And so I just want to thank Rebecca and and Karen and Megan and for all their work in terms of working together with with folks on the ground as well as some other community partners to advance some of this work. So really proud of of the team's efforts and yeah, look forward to where this can go as well in the future.
Thanks, Randy. Absolutely. We want to congratulate you. Thank you. Any other, any questions? Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden Mill. Good morning, County Council, and good morning, Rebecca. Thank you for the beautiful presentation as well. Did I hear at the beginning that these are being circulated to our municipalities to share the good news stories in our libraries, in various places, our tourism booth perhaps in Southgate where they enter upon Gray County? And if if they haven't already been mailed, are we able to take some back with us?
Yes, so they have not yet been mailed. We were going to reach out to our contacts through the C C C O P and see how many copies they wanted. And yes, but happy to provide a small stack if you want to take a few after this meeting. You can just swing by and I'll give you give you a few. And yes, the idea is that we're, you know, we didn't do this to sit on a shelf. So we're hoping to get it out out to, you know, as many people as possible. Certainly planning to get at least a copy for every counselor in your municipality so that they can see what what everybody's been up to.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor McQueen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and morning, County Councilors, and thank you for the report. Just a couple of general comments on climate change. Listening to the business report this morning and Ford Motor Company is saying they're losing fifty thousand dollars for every electric vehicle that they're producing today. Those challenges that we do see, and also they're ramping up their three-quarter ton and one-ton Ford trucks and the Oakville plant. So it's it's interesting how the consumer is still dictating what they want for for vehicles. There was a program on CBC on Sunday morning talking about and we probably know this from the province of Ontario and across the provinces, density or 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 density in the sense of housing. It's happening across where people are buying single-family homes, tearing them down and building fourplexes, eightplexes because of density and and affordability. But it was interesting. They were talking about the carbon footprint. And to remove a house and build something else, there is a carbon footprint because either you're disposing of that house, and there's even houses in Southern Vancouver that are only seven years old that are being turned down, tore down and you know, because the density and the mandate that they were looking at from affordability and and density and stuff. Something I'm noodling in my head, but you know, if there's ways of repurposing homes from the carbon footprint, I think there should be some incentives from that aspect, whether it's through a development charge, something we could look at. I don't know. And also on the affordability side, it just seems shames that the shame that, you know, there, this is going on because of other circumstances, but there's still that carbon footprint. And affordability from young people, you know, houses and stuff. I know it's just something that was interesting. It was on, like I said, CBC Sunday morning. You probably could look it up. And it talks about that footprint of of that transformation of homes and urban settings. But I just think that they're, and then so on in that report, they are talking about some of these seven-year-old homes or other homes being moved to indigenous communities and different things like that as well to try to lessen that footprint of that carbon footprint. So, you know, it's it's, you know, it's 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 good that they're doing that. But I think across in our, you know, even county of Gray and different things, there's probably circumstances, maybe not to the same degree. But if a home that still has a purpose, certainly if a home is a fifty years old or a hundred years old, certainly it doesn't have the qualities of 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 fuel efficiency or heat, you know, as as a newer home. But there are a lot of homes out there that do. So, you know, it's just something that I, you know, maybe others could think about. But if there are opportunities to repurpose versus, you know, taking it to the landfill, and they're also saying in that article, forget it was a high percentage of stuff that goes to our landfill is building material. You know, renovations. I mean, I'll give you one example, just in Brewster's Lake, there was a home that was sold for one point or one point five million. Well, we've got a text last year and it's gone. Totally gone. It was a quality home that could have been moved, could have been repurposed, it could have been anything, but gone. It's built in something else. So we see that. We see that throughout, you know, our municipalities and stuff like that. So it just is there is, is there a way to create that incentive? And you talk about carbon footprint. There's a lot of carbon in building a house. If you look at the footprint that that to to create all that material and all that stuff and stuff. There is a little bit in the sense of of wages and stuff that takes to move a house or repurpose that house or whatever. But anyway, I just, you know, there's other aspects, I think, from a climate change perspective, that I think we can be looking at from many aspects, not only from repurposing, but for affordability, for, you know, young people trading something or whatever. However, anyway, just whoever thought, but there was an interesting article that was on CBC on Sunday morning talking about this, and you think seven-year-old homes are being tore down for for density. So maybe look it up and I was gonna, I didn't catch the whole program, but I'm just going to go back and see if I could find it on CBC. But you know, there's other aspects of how we can look at carbon, you know, our our carbon footprint and climate change and, you know, and maybe there's a win-win-win from a from many different aspects. I mean, you look at some of your aggregate producers, recycling asphalt, recycling gravel, recycling, you know, all that. I will, I'll stop there, Mr. Warren, but I just think that it's something, you know, we're talking about this. This is on our agenda. It's something that there's many aspects that we can do to, you know, move it into a cleaner or greener way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McQueen. And you're right, there are multitudes of ways to reduce our impact on the climate, but I think our start here, as Rebecca has outlined, we've got a pretty good start on things that we can do right here, right now. Rebecca.
Yes, thanks very much for that, Counselor McQueen. I think we're talking about the difference of operational carbon versus embodied carbon. So operational carbon is how much gas and electricity it burns while it's operating. Embodied carbon is how much it took to build it in the first place. And we're certainly considering both of those in our green development standards and looking to, if there's anything we can do regarding regarding, you know, waste management or repurposing, you know, if they are tearing something down that it needs to be repurposed, or at least the waste needs to be diverted into a sensible paths, not just going, putting a perfectly good new house into landfill is not the ideal situation. And we are trying to look for mechanisms to to address that. And we're also considering some of these through our waste management community of practice, looking for ways to collaborate on some of those diversion streams, be it shingles or wood or or something that, you know, perhaps we could all collaborate on having a unified county strategy on that instead of, you know, everybody trying to figure it out by themselves.
Thank you, Rebecca. And now, Kim, do you want some, add something?
Just quickly. There was a report that was shared out today amongst the CAO group from the Canadian Standards Association that talks about the circular built economy. And there's an awful lot of, I think, policy work that will lead to some program work about how to do exactly what you're referring to, Counselor McQueen, is how do we put things in place that allow to separate those waste streams and and allow for things to be reused where they can be here, recycled where they can be.
Just a couple of initiatives that you sort of talked a bit about and that application that you're circulating was in Gray Highlands, we implemented reused containers at our landfills. They get, can be diverted, speaks about that a little bit. And then we have the the place a year, the free giveaway at your curb side. You know, I mean, technically you can put it out the road and say free, it'll go anyway. But you know, it's just something that trying to repurpose reuse. You know, I think 30 years ago, the three Rs was, you know, reduce, recycle, re-reuse, right? So it's still there. So, you know, we can all, we could, we all do a little, we can all get to a lot, right?
We all have our part. Counselor Greg.
Thank you, Warden. I didn't have a question coming in, but you did make a comment that created a question. In the one paragraph, it says, in partnership with the Clean Air Partnership, the Community Energy Efficiency Financing Initiative. Did I hear you comment that we're working on an initiative that the Clean Air Partnerships thinks the county taxpayer should bank rule financing for residential retrofits? Because I would be extremely reluctant for us to pursue that path very far when external lenders, that's the rule that that they're there to provide.
Yeah, so I'm happy to provide some clarification on that one. What we're working on the Clean Air Partnership right now is a it's called Community Efficiency Financing and it's a program of FCM. The, what we've committed to so far is a design, program, design and feasibility. So we are just looking at how it could work. If we were to pursue the next step, it would be the capital would primarily come from FCM and then it would be passed along through us to a homeowner at a, at an interest rate that was the same as we were paying. So it would be pretty much a flow-through from from FCM to to here. This has not been decided and I, and I recognize that that we haven't report, brought a report on this, on this yet because we, we are, we're just at that feasibility phase. So once we have a complete feasibility study, that's when we'll be bringing it to council with for for discussion about what, if we move forward with another, the sort of next phase of that initiative.
Thanks, Rebecca. Counselor Boddy.
Just quickly, I want to echo Rebecca and thank Counselor McQueen for his, his embedded advocacy there for the county-wide waste system.
Okay, I'm going to pretend I didn't hear that. Are there any other questions? On the report? I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much, Rebecca. Appreciate it. Okay, let's go back to, I think it was six, yes, six B on the consent agenda for the quarterly purchasing report. Counselor Greg, you'll move, receiving that? Thank you. Secondaire. Counselor Nielsen. Counselor Greg.
Just a couple of quick questions. Thanks for the opportunity, Warden, to staff. There is a program in brackets here for a couple procurements, the agricultural equipment program. Just wondered if staff can elaborate further on that program for information purposes as well as there was a pre-approval for a tandem, which is these that we know are anywhere from probably 15 to 20 months lead time and and council granted that. But my question then is, do we have any sort of like a dashboard type of reporting to track these pre-approvals? As we know, some of these larger purchases have to be done, you know, in 2023, 2024, and then we're budgeting for it in subsequent years. So and and the overall surplus or deficit position, our staff planning on providing like a dashboard, an update to Budget and Finance Committee throughout the year on on that position?
I'm going to say the first part maybe to Pat. Do you want to take a run at the first part? And then maybe I'll go to Mary Lou on the, on the, on the second piece.
Yeah, just both, actually both these tenders, the tandem and and the tractor and the chipper were all purchased through Canoe. So Canoe is is a kind of a vendor or I guess a organization we work with that has contracts already set up with with vendors. So they have a, you know, items listed in there that are percentage off MSRP. It just makes the tendering easier for the purchasing department. And they do all the stuff in advance, like make sure they're meeting all trade treaties, things like that. So I guess that Agriculture Equipment Program is a category of the canoe, is what I understand for purchasing. So that's why those were under those numbers. And as far as the tandem, yes, we had taken a report looking for pre-approval in February, TRCW 04-24, and then tendered that in May and or in April and awarded it in May. So now we're just, you know, rewarded it and we're waiting, like you said, you know, up to, up to 20 months, maybe even to get the delivery.
Thanks, Pat. Mary Lou, do you want to speak to the, I think it was the dashboard concept, please?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Currently, we, we don't have anything that we would call per se as a dashboard. We do track within each department what has to be budgeted for the subsequent years. So it doesn't create a deficit in the current year because we know what we're going to have to budget in the future year. If Budget and Finance Committee wants to see something as part of our reporting on future budget year commitments, we can certainly do that.
Thanks, Mary Lou. Counselor Greg, is you further?
Not too much further. I mean, this is particularly just a positive update. But if the opposite were true and and we were significantly seeing a lot of overages here, it actually would carry forward and be a legitimate concern. It's not right now because it's a positive appendix, but that's just something for us, I think, to be able to track and consider. There's so much material. I mean, who can track all of it as as councillors? So in some easy to process method to be able to be aware of where we are in the current year relative to our overall budget process. I get it for like future purchases that falls forward, but this is a review of purchases currently and this review could, some years have you in a significant deficit position. So I'm just wondering if that were true, as council, you'd want to be aware and and be conscious of that, I think.
Mary Lou, did you want to add something?
So a Budget and Finance Committee will be receiving a financial update at the September meeting. And it shows you what our 2024 projected surplus and deficit is based on what we know when the report's published. For equipment purchases for paramedic services and transportation, they, what they have is a transfer to reserve every year. And so that's how their purchasers are funded. When staff is looking at the reserve adequacy, they're looking at what the future purchases are. They're asking the departments to update their cost based on what they're currently knowing or they go out and, you know, get some information from the companies they deal with. And then we look and see whether the transfer to reserve is adequate. Because otherwise, you're right, we're setting ourselves up for a problem in the future that you don't have enough money to pay for what you need to buy.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Any other, any other questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. There are no closed meeting matters. Is there any other business? Counselor Boddy.
Just quickly, after seven days went past, quickly, I didn't respond, but I want to thank Kim for the report and council around the table for supporting it because it is something that's important to, to on sound. Thanks.
Oh, you're very welcome. Wait till you see what's coming next meeting. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Any notice of motion? Okay, I need one more motion to adjourn. Counselor DeBreen. Counselor Pringle. All those in favor? That's carried. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.